All the person Chapman, President. All the person Smith?
President.
All the person Key?
President.
All the person Randall Allen? All the person Rogers?
President.
Mayor Clark?
President. Next on the agenda is indications of the place of allegiance. It's, uh, Patrick Aaron.
Yes.
Please do the indications.
Father, we thank you for coming forward and being here today. We have to teach us some lessons from tonight as we go in this council meeting. Father, we pray that there will be order, God, that there will be unity. Have your way in this department, and she will say we pray for you.
Yeah. Before we move on to the next part of our meeting, some of you may have heard, some of you may not have heard, but the County of Cook, the State of Illinois, had a tremendous loss this past weekend in our Cook County Party, Karen Diopero. She was a stalwart improviser, township specifically, doing and accomplishing so many wonderful things on behalf of people of their township, the city of Maywood, but also the state of Illinois. We will have time to say more about her and to give tribute to her life, but at this particular point in time, I would like for us to all to at least spend ten seconds in silence in memory of this tremendous loss. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Our first public comment is Mena Johnson, followed by Ruby Dunkey. Yes. Remember, these comments are no speaker may donate these gifts at times without a speaker. Comments shall be carried with respect at all time. No person may use public comment for a purpose of campaigning or advertisement. This is not a pay question and answer time. This is not a question and answer time. The council cannot engage in a conversation with the public. Questions and concerns about operations should be addressed with city staff during regular business hours.
Hello.
And you have three minutes to make your comments.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mena Johnson. I am a lifelong resident of Harvey. Um, I'm a federal ward president, and I haven't been for a meeting in a while, but I do, since it's not a public, you know, back and forth, I would just like to say unfortunately that I am very distraught and upset at the way the city of Harvey looks. Um, the buildings that I pass by down 154th Street are horrible. Um, they're falling apart. They got caution paper around them. They're a danger to the environment. They are a hazard to our young children that have to walk through there. And I just would really like to know what the city's plan for demolishing those vacant buildings that are eyesore, that are a distraction to the community, and that are a safety hazard.
Thank you very much.
And also the city streets as well. I drive through some other cities, uh, local cities, and they've all gotten their streets paved. Um, and I don't know why the city of Harvey cannot have something like that. And I would spend big tax dollars like everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, uh, is Ruby Dunkey, followed by Chappelle Jones.
Good evening, everyone. It's always a pleasure to see you. We have such a nice group that's here to at least be a part of us. I came here this evening to just say that we're growing and we're doing great things here in Harvey. I know there's sometimes discontent and discomboblement of my relationship, but we're still growing. We're moving forward. I did want to say this good evening, Mayor. I want to say to the all the persons, the city administration, and of course, all of you, I've been looking, audience. This is just a little reminder because last year, I believe, and also prior to this current administration, we talked about just definitely on our evenings to, uh, that we have our city council meeting, that we should not interfere or have any kind of committee meetings because it can always be a distraction to the fact that people want to come in and then talk to them ultimately. And therefore, we should delay that because you have at least seven to ten days between each second and fourth board, and fourth monthly meeting. There should not be any committee meetings on the second and fourth Mondays of the month prior to the city council meetings. This is especially directed to the controller and the finance chair.
One minute left.
It is not necessary for me to go any further or to elaborate, but you may speak to me after the meeting regarding this matter if it's necessary. All the persons, you have received your required material seven to ten days prior to each meeting for review. Please comply. If you have any further information, please contact me, or you can also speak with our mayor. Thank you, and this is for the concerned citizens of Harvey.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Chappelle Hookes, followed by Berice Claywings.
Hello, everyone. Uh, I'm Chappelle Hookes. Um, an elected, uh, trustee of the Harvey Public Library in 2022. I was just, I'm newly elected. Um, so I was researching some things, and I was going through, um, some old papers and stuff. And I saw when we had the 2019 election, it says Christopher Clark, another mayoral challenger, said his campaign is focused on kitchen table issues like facing streets, lights, curbs, and sidewalks, reducing water bills, and improving police and fire protection. These are the things, quote, "These are the things that affect every day person here in the city of Harvey," end quote, said Clark. I'm trying to figure out where all those things are because our streets are still raked. It's dark. Our curbs, sidewalks, the only sidewalks that was done was on 154th. That was during campaign season 2023 to make it look like something was being done. And then we still have these half-built community centers or, or hoods or whatever they are. That's that 1.7 billion down drain that nothing's being done about. We still don't know what the money is. We still don't have a grocery store that we were promised. It's a big sign, J. Foods, all day long. There's no grocery store. All of these people are being, being put out of their businesses. I'm just not understanding how we are growing and moving forward when we're still stuck and we're going backwards from what we had before. We can't even shop out here unless we go to one-stop liquor or some other, you know, liquor store or service station. We have no grocery stores. We have nothing.
Thirty seconds.
So, I mean, some of these things need to be talked about instead of saying you can't answer questions on Q and A. Some of these things need to be answered because our tax dollars pay for all this stuff.
Thank you.
Next up is Berice Claywings, followed by Miss Urban.
Good evening. My name is Berice Claywings. I'm the only founder of the PDJ Foundation. Go ahead, you're 1-5-3-4, Mr. and Mrs. I'm here to just, um, hopefully have the all the persons and the mayor review the ordinance of, um, 120410, 11027 on sidewalks. Um, I had some clothing, uh, clothing items for shoes displayed outside of my business, and I was informed by, um, one of the inspectors that the mayor stated that, you know, I had to put my things inside, which I did. And then I looked at the ordinance, and there is an ordinance. But my wife and I say every day when I come to my job, I see the carpet place. She has a rainbow full of carpets set outside of her store daily, every day. And my issue with that is that I don't make any money from my research shop. I put every dime that I make back into the community. So, the money that is made there, that's a quick food on my table. But in hindsight, it takes food off because when we don't make the money, I pay money out of my pocket. And I would like to think that I helped the citizens out because I have people coming daily who don't have clothing, who don't have food. I clothe them and I keep them out of my own pocket. And so, I would like to think that that prevents them from property stealing to get the things that they don't need. And so, sometimes we explain these things to help people know that I'm there so I can help them, not to make money for me, but to help the community. So, I'm asking you guys, please, to review that ordinance. Maybe not every day we should do that, but maybe some days a week or sometimes that we can still do that. Now, you guys don't come down my street every day and be here, but every day I want you guys to walk out this building and see that rainbow of, uh, carpet that's displayed on the wall. I'm not asking for preferential treatment. I'm asking for treatment that is going to be consistent. And once anything is consistently built, we want to have people looking at the negatives of possible I only do for those that I go and like. So, if we stay with consistency, then we can probably do things better. And the community can come together if they see that we do that. So, if all the persons can please go get that and review it. And, um, if I want to be kept to what I'm supposed to do, everybody else should also. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Berice, followed by Bruce Wellesky.
Yeah, hello, everybody. My name is Ms. Eric Urban. I'm a former trustee of the Harvey Public Library from 2015 to 2021. And the reason I'm up here today is because I'm very concerned about the number of grants which the city of Harvey could not qualify for because they did not have their audits current, and they did not have their tips currents when they were to apply for. At a certain number, the federal government requires that, uh, you have those audits done before they would even consider you for those grants. We got a poor city, and I hear you all complaining about what we don't have and what we can't do and all these other things, but you don't get your paperwork in, in turn in on time, years behind. You're never going to get what you're supposed to get. Okay, so you might want to take a look at that. And I'm going to do some research and see how many grants that our city did miss out. And then I'll come back and let you all know in case you all don't know what's going on. It's a secret. I'll let you know what's going on. And also, I'd like to address all of the dissolve and the finance committee and the EDC committee. Those committees were dissolved because a resident asked, "How come the treasurer wasn't giving reports on a monthly basis and doing that annual report?" That was for the truth. And just banning those, those committees and taking those ads out of those committees and those people who are members of those committees, that doesn't change one thing. All of these that you're trying to cover up what's going on, and you can't do it. And we still want a report from the treasurer every month, and we still want an annual report every year. So, move around, do whatever you want to do. It don't change one thing. It may make you feel good for a second, but you need to get your reports done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bruce Wellesky, followed by School Turner.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm in driving with the Harvey Historical Society. I just wanted to mention we are sponsoring a coloring contest, our first public contest, to raise awareness for the motor road historic buildings that are across the street here from City Hall that are in danger of demolition. As a reminder, we have presented investors that said they would buy with their own money. I can't believe I have to keep saying this, with their own money at no cost to the taxpayers to fix the dilapidated buildings, as the lady said, the first commenter, to fix them at no cost to the city and reuse them so we could do a cafe or a clothing store or something, whatever. And then mayor and city council have said, "No, no, 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 no." Every time. And this is a local black investor, which I know is that one. They're not from out of town to be orators. They're not coming in to, you know, rape and pill this Harvey. And the city says, "No, no, no." Why? Why are you saying no to fixing up these beautiful buildings? We could have an amazing downtown like when, when my mom was growing up. I mean, they would walk downtown to shop and nuts on Harvey. So, um, to bring attention to that, we got four gift bags donated to us as prizes. We'll have a reception for our winners. Forms are available for me tonight. They are also here in City Hall on the counter, and they're at the Harvey Library and at 15333 Action. So, for your coloring utensils. I have a question. Why was the thing with, uh, why was the mayor hiding in his office for half of the city council meetings the last few times? Alderman Chapman did ask that question, but the city attorney, um, nor Mayor Cortlandzki answered. They ignored it. They don't, isn't that illegal? To my understanding, the mayor Cortlandzki is only supposed to serve when the elected mayor is incapacitated or otherwise unable to preside over the meeting for extenuating circumstances. Further, Mayor Cortlandzki cannot hold an ordinance as an alderman. So, wouldn't that invalidate Mr. Winski's votes during those meetings? I mean, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but this needs to be addressed. Ms. Chapman asked the question, and the last team, legal counsel and Mr. Winski, just didn't answer it, and then they moved on. So, you know, I think that's important to address that. Uh, also, recently, the city council voted to remove the two aldermen, as was mentioned from the committees, because they were asking, allowing the public to ask questions. Since then, there have been no committee meetings. Was the real goal to cycle public questions? No committee meetings? Be held so the public can get a ton of the answers? Um, also, as you are aware, you all have to fire the businesses, call up the property taxes. Uh, a lot of us have been, you know, talking to some of these businesses. Many of them rent. They do not own their properties, and they are very angry. I don't know if someone would school it up, but they're saying, "Well, you know, why are you putting my name out on the glass like this? I pay my rent. I do everything I'm supposed to. I fulfill city requirements. Why am I being embarrassed?" Um, so that's just another issue. Uh, we have our churches being harassed, and, um, the especially local thing is that there are some businesses that have donated.
Thank you very much. The next person on the next school turner. School Turner. Followed by Cheryl Jones.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Clark, uh, I just have a public comment. Uh, could we do something like the first time to recognize on the floor for every meeting to see how many people, the first time they should be recognized that came, and that might draw them to come back again? And also, like, could we also bring in, like, the school levels that do something great? We should be able to give a certificate or something. And that'd be more community, young people to come in, not just our senior, you know, we do the patrol, but I think that'd be able to help more youth to get involved with the process of what we're doing in Harvey, and they would realize what's good and bad on their own side, other than just living there. And I think that'd be a good thing to bring into council. Either you do it once a month, first month, the first one, or the second. You gotta be corresponding and even be able to get more people involved. That's all I have to say. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you. The next one coming here is Cheryl Jones.
Good evening. Now that the crowds and cameras are on, so let's get back to the real issues. At the last city council meeting, Mayor, you came out at 8:30. You rushed through the remainder of the agenda, tried to censor to all the persons and the treasurer. At that meeting, a comment was made, and there was talk about you. We did something as your time is of alderman. You and two other alderpersons, and they know who they are, boycotted city council meetings, actually more than one, about seventeen or eighteen meetings. Those actions, the former mayor, could have been, could have censored the three, but didn't. Remember that? Every city council meeting is a contradiction. Inconsistent ideas, ordinance slash resolutions that oppose one another. There are all the persons who are not, who are just going through the motions. You were elected, but don't act like you were. Not one does what is in the best interest of their constituents. For example, all the persons from the third, fifth, and sixth wards who are sitting here in meetings during the bare minimum, you vote yes on everything. In those meetings, in those wards, no meetings are being held, none, none. Whenever a meeting is announced by the second, sixth ward, the fourth ward, I'm sorry, the second and the fifth wards, the sixth ward, all the person announces that he too will have a meeting. But those meetings do or would they ever happen? The third and fifth ward are all the persons. How do you expect your residents to receive information? Through phone calls? Through social media? I know, I suppose. You know, unconscious absorption of information. Oh, the first ward, you know, she's not here. She's part of the contradiction too. By being used as a tool to masquerade, conceal, camouflage since business which is presented to the residents. You've been given, she's been given a new platform as mayor Cortlandzki and can direct on her performances. Also, the Harvey Area Chamber of Commerce, you know, that group that they try to silence. We've been in here for over thirty years, twenty years, I'm sorry. We are having our next, uh, stakeholders being brought to the public residence. We'll be on April 27th, the fifth February building, main building, from 10 a.m. to 11:30. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is comptroller's report. Um, but before we do that, I also, I'm, I'm elected to mention that both Alderman Winski, all person Winski, and all the person Randall Allen did call in advance and said that they would not want to be here at today's meeting. So, I just wanted to make sure I say that. Next is the comptroller's report. Um, this is Will Swayers.
Uh, Mayor, uh, report was emailed to everyone. I did to get the treasurer, so I did to email her a copy of that.
Why don't you spin up here?
Comptroller's report was submitted for the 11 months in the March 31st of this year, showing our cash balances, our budget's actual comparisons for this year to last year. It's slightly better than budget on revenue, slightly lower on expenses, cash. We have all the cash to give a service to bonds and we want community to follow those anymore, other than that, the bills of our goals. The outstanding bills at this point are probably lower than they probably been over that year. I will ask that the, uh, that the treasurer's report also be posted to the website. Thank you.
You can do that and we'll make sure that happens, uh, as well as, thank you.
Um, Mayor Clark.
Cheryl recognizes this second word.
Thank you. And thank you comptroller, uh, for providing the report and giving opportunity to review it in totality. As, you know, we had it a couple hours beforehand. Um, with the report, I'd like to add so that the broader community knows how often we receive that report. Um, if you could give what our profit margins are, you know, where are we earning and where are we losing? What is our overall balance at this current time? We know we have a deficit, but just for the community at large to have an understanding on our financial landscape.
Well, not alone personally. If you have those types of questions, once again, you had submitted those questions in writing to the mayor's office, the mayor can get them to the, um, to the comptroller's office, and they can be answered in the proper fashion.
All right, I mean, Mayor, because I wasn't aware that this is the first that we've had a comptroller's report since, uh, this morning, then Monday, May 6th, I wasn't aware of what the, uh, the process looked like to request these details. And we haven't had something as first as what I briefly was able to review. So, that's why I'm asking you at this point.
And that is appreciated. The chairman's position still stands. So, if you would follow the directions of the chairman, we'd appreciate that. Next item, next item on the agenda is special announcements. Because the mayor is the acting chair at this particular point in time, we will skip both 70 and 9 and go to the executive session for litigation. The chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session. And by the motion by the sixth, second by the third. All in favor, signify by say aye. Those opposed. Hearing aye at 7:32, we'll go into executive session. Thank you very much. Three minutes. Now, we're back into the open session at 7:59. At 7:59, the chair will entertain a motion to go into open session. Motion by the third, second by the sixth. All in favor, signify by say aye. Those opposed. Hearing aye, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, March 25th, 2024. There was a changes to the minutes regarding the title of the temporary chair. When the person is sitting here, um, at the dais, it is, even that person may have the position of the mayor Cortlandzki. They are acting as a temporary chair. So, there was changes have been made, and also, I guess, the miscalculation of the mayor's name. So, if there is no objection to that, the chair will entertain a motion to approve. Motion by the third, second by the sixth. All in favor, signify by say aye. Those opposed. Hearing aye, motion carries. Next item is. Oh, okay. Um, hearing, uh, one aye, motion carries, motion from the second. We've already, okay, we're gonna do that again. Just gonna do it again, that's all it is. No, we're not doing that. We're doing it all in favor, signify by say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Hearing a, a, um, ayes from two aldermen and nays from two other aldermen. The mayor will break that tie. So, the mayor votes aye. Next item on the agenda is the 12 approval of ordinances and resolutions for the city of Harvey, 12 of the new business, 12 B1, ordinance regarding dumpsters for multifamily residential, commercial, school, and industrial buildings. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Aye.
Motion by the third, second by the second. Uh, please call the roll.
All the person Chapman?
Yes.
All the person Rogers?
Yes.
All the person Key?
Yes.
All the person Randall Allen?
Yes.
All the person Winski? Motion carried, and that's ordinance 3490. 3490.
Thank you. Next item is resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into contracts, including joint participation agreement with the state of Illinois. This is for joint purchase master contract for lots of salt. The chair will entertain a motion to approve. Motion by the third, second by the sixth. By the point, would you please call the roll?
All the person Smith?
Yes.
All the person Chapman?
Yes.
All the person Rogers?
Yes.
All the person Randall Allen? All the person Key?
Yes.
All the person Winski? Motion carried, and that's resolution. Motion carried, and that's resolution three zero seven eight. Three zero seven eight.
Thank you. Next item is resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement I G A I in between the county of Cook, village of Riverdale, and the city of Harvey, for infrastructure projects, or on the top of order. Um, this is, uh, to do inspection, potential de-watering, and future repair of the, um, pipes at the Little County Metro River Tunnel. The chair will entertain a motion to approve. Motion by the sixth, second by the third. At the point, would you please call a roll?
Alderman Pete?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Strickland. Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Chapman?
Yes.
Alderman Randall out. Motion carried, and that's resolution three zero seven nine. Three zero seven nine.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, chair will entertain a motion to approve, I mean, motion to, motion to adjourn. There's a motion to adjourn, second by the second. All in favor, signify by say aye. Those opposed. Hearing done. We are adjourned at eight oh fourteen. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.